Yes.
Record. Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call the. Committee of the whole. Meeting to order for Monday, November sixth. Uh, roll call.
And Charlie Brandon here.
That's McGregor.
Here.
Rusty Moore here.
Rusty Ratty. Excuse.
Rusty Taylor.
Yeah.
And Rusty there.
Excuse. Okay. Public comments. Probably wait for Donna. Or does she wanna speak during?
She knows she's only allowed us to talk during public commenters.
Okay.
We went over those rules.
Okay. Okay, and I will, um. I'll just go to number four. I have no comments right now besides. Like I said, we don't have any. Okay. And I'll go back to public. Public comment, Donna.
Ready?
If you have any comments.
Comments, or I just wonder if anybody has needs any clarification or any questions about how the school district feels about the. Need for an SRO officer.
I guess, would you wanna explain like in a short, brief summary of that? Your guys' perspective?
Um, I'm not quite sure, cuz I'm not up to speed, like how much you've discussed or, um.
Oh, I happened at the Villa, or the Village Board meeting. The, the school board meeting. That's, I think, we, we met before the last school board meeting.
Okay, so, we've just been, um, you know, I've been thirty-three years, right? And for a long, just short story, like a summary, I, seven years I've been in this position. I've seen the need or the increase of security or help or prevention, whether it be safety for the students, or from the parents. Or just in school, situations escalate. And looking at my, like, my calls to the police, um, suspensions, expulsions, all of that has been on a rapid rise the last six, seven years. And the last, this last year hasn't been incredible. Um, so, you know, I went to, actually, my superintendent and said, what can we do? What do I need to change? Like. Um, we need some support and help. They've been wonderful. But it's at an as-me basis, and would we do something as preventative in the schools instead of always calling for emergencies, right? Like, we better change our philosophy or work on some other things, but right now, we're just making it work. Um, and with the mental health crisis, you know, we, it's usually two people in a room and calling crisis and social service, and. It's just really increased. And I, I don't know, like I said. Seven years ago when I started this job, wasn't there this year especially? And I'm not sure if you don't walk in somebody else's shoes, you know, I'm talking and preaching to the choir, cuz I have two people here that are in the district. What those days look like. So I just thought maybe I'd come if you had any questions for me, or, I mean, could I come with stats and numbers? Absolutely. And if need be, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any initial questions? I guess this public comment really won't have a lot we can discuss back and forth, but anything jumping on at you guys?
So, just to clarify from your initial question, that the, um, board meeting, it was the annual meeting, the board did. Approve of fiscal district side of the funding, your fund AD, correct?
Yep, it did. And we're looking for other resources also. Um, what a lot of people feel that would be a good thing would be, would be called a community resource officer. So it would be. Working together with the community in a lot of different aspects. Um, it wouldn't be a full-time at the school. Um, but prevention and programs and, and looking at this different, even what we're doing, how we're operating right now.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything?
How many hours a week is the school hoping for?
Um, we said twenty-five a week.
Okay.
And that would be flexible. I mean, there is one day, I think, uh, the guidance counselor myself and the police officer from nine to three doing investigations. Ninety-three on one investigation. So, you know, we wouldn't want them to walk out on that, and then, you know, so we would have to be flexible.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, Donna, besides that? Anything else you wanna? Oh, sorry, Caleb.
No, Tiara. I think there was plug-in problems.
What?
I, I think, I'm gonna assume that the cord that's right there in front of you is probably has a short end it. And you.
There we go. Make that one. Okay.
So.
Where, what are you seeing that's telling you?
On the TV, it was.
Blinking?
And I think it's that, that connection on that computer.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And, uh, the twenty twenty-four budget development work session, so this is just going through our budgets if we need to get those numbers in. And kind of just finalize, um, I don't know, I come in. As I do every year, kind of late, and you know, and.
Pass me one of those packets over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's.
Um.
These are all, I think they're.
I thought I put one, here, you have one right there.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so. Obviously, it was not at the public safety meeting or FHR on Thursday, so can you guys fill in on anything that might have happened? That way?
Public safety?
Yeah.
With that, well. I'd just like to say, I, I don't. Wanted to make like the, the public safety is trying to be contrary, but since we hadn't discussed in any real sense, the police. Budget until last meeting, I know numbers had been floating around and people had been worked. And, uh, we did, uh, in our motion, make some changes based on some, uh, looking forward. To the budget, what we might need in terms of a few of the line items. And so I know that the numbers have changed since. Last week, but I just wanted to know that that's not, the attitude was not to be contrary to the numbers, but just to present. Um, oh, what the. Public safety. Felt like was deserving, um, for these numbers as we talked with. Um, the chief, so, um, and those changes were in. Uh, the motion, and I don't know if they were incorporated, uh, but they were certainly, um, taken from the budget proposal. Um, uh, ten thirty-one.
What?
That was. There.
Okay. So, is Diane, where? Do we sit on your same draft as the ten thirty-one? I didn't change anything. I was asked to prepare it with a full-time administrator.
And that I could take certain things. Adjust certain things to make it come out. The one thing I did is I took the four hundred account for the police squad out, they needed, I was told they could do that, they needed that money to make it work. Um. Generally, the four hundred account for the first time, I guess, last, so did know from the last few years.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Otherwise, yeah, this works, so if there's any changes, I'm not sure what your plan there for administrator. So, you know, whatever changes you have to that. Give me numbers. Men and. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Dwayne, do you have anything? I forgot you're up there. I'm sorry.
Your remote muted, Dwayne.
Page two.
You have unmuted.
All right, got it. I couldn't get unmuted quick enough. My question is this, can you hear me?
Yep.
My question is this, if I understand it right, you're looking at the budget right now with no adjustments from the. Public Safety Committee's recommendation. And no adjustments in the budget at all for a community resource officer. Am I correct to say that, Diane?
Right, that was just the ask to do it with a full-time administrator, and no one gave me any adjustments, so it's the same one that was there as of October thirty-first, three percent increase for everybody. In wages.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're starting from the same, off on the same page.
Okay, so. Anybody have anything right now? Any questions, just where, what your thought are?
Well, I think we have to discuss the, the meeting that went on today and that idea of what's on the table, if legacy. Does come through, and I don't know what that looks like, right? We're not gonna have that answer from Legacy today. They're willing to move up the timeline, but basically, they're saying. S- schools in, there's seventy grand left over, and I, I was not at the meeting, but what I'm hearing is if the. They won't fund anything unless the village gets in the game, and I think they said like half, so.
Can I talk to him?
You have to add to, you have to.
Hold on.
Um, so they're looking for thirty-five. So, whether if it works out or not, I mean, to me, we at least have to have a conversation because, you know. Basically, we're talking about getting a. Community resource officer funded of the village expense would be thirty-five grand.
Dwayne, are you aware what went on in that meeting? Did, did you get?
No, I'm not aware. All I remember, the last time I left, it was at fifty-some, so is, is the number gone lower than what the request was in the past?
Potentially, hopefully. If Legacy Foundation. Does what they're kind of indicating they'd like us to apply for, that would mean we need to come with thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and the next question I have is basically both the school board and the, and the village, then we'll be looking at. Uh, their share of funding, but with the assumption or understanding that the legacy grant would fill the different, uh, the, the. Different amount to make the full, full officer.
I'm gonna assume it's probably like a fifty-fifty matching grant. And, uh, they went in for five years. And so that agreement, um, would be for five years, and so obviously, understanding that if we start at thirty-five, it might not end at thirty-five with, but, uh.
And the school may end up taking on more hours too. That was something that was fluid, you know, again, I wasn't in the conversation, but that's what I've heard after, right? School starting at twenty-five, they may recognize they need thirty-five or thirty, or I don't know, it's, you know, that's gotta be fluid, but.
The schools. The school is willing to pay one hundred percent of whatever time they're using, correct? That was just my understanding of the conversation too.
Yeah.
So let's say that is forty, then you, then the school district is willing to do the forty hours. Per week during the school year, obviously, and then the village would have to pick up whenever there's not, correct?
Yeah.
And their number, their portion was using a formula, right? It wasn't random, it was. That.
Their portion was only twenty-five hours per week.
Okay.
And based, that's the last I had in numbers, however, the school board, if you have a, let's say you're. We're doing fifty-fifty between the school board and the village, but then there is a certain percentage that comes from the legacy grant. Then basically, we're saying fifty-fifty plus the legacy grants, right? If I understand right, on a table be. We need the, we need for this year coming up, if we wanna go forward on this, you have to cough up thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand. That's all I'm looking for, that number.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. So, but for our discussion tonight, if you wanna add on, can we? Resource officer on a table, we need to find thirty-five thousand to add to the budget. Correct?
Correct. And we just have to recognize that we have to do this every year for five years, right? Like, what would happen if all of a sudden it's, we just don't have the money, then what? I do, did we have that conversation in the meeting?
No, but I think, I mean, looking at it now, it's really like, if we don't have it, then their grant. Stops.
Just stopped.
You know, I mean, I, I don't think it's sort of like breaking a. Contract, I wouldn't imagine, but that would be, uh.
Next question I have, I'm starting to interrupt. Next question I have is that, if I'm hearing you, they're looking at a five-year grant?
Yeah, for, yeah, for sustainability purposes, if it was one year, you know, uh. And they wanna be able to fund it, and so five years would be, then they walk away, send and do something else. They don't wanna.
Okay. So if I understand right, then if we move forward for this year, we gotta come up thirty-five thousand dollars to put into the program. With the understanding, the memorandum, understanding, it'd be a five-year program, based on having the legacy grant. And the other, whatever the legacy grant provides each year, and the cost goes up, both the school. Both school district and the village would have to still share that fifty-fifty. Let's say this year is thirty, next year is thirty-two thousand, here at third year is thirty-five thousand. That's how the premise would go if you have a five-year grant, and you do memorandum for five years. That make sense?
Yeah, I think that was the intention.
I wasn't there, and I'm trying to make sure I get to put items on the table, right? Then the second item that I thought you'd wanna, well, hear or heard. That someone's to put on a table. Is some additional funding for police officers that came out of public safety committee after the finance screen, after the committee as a whole.
The, the public safety meeting from last Thursday?
Yes. Am I correct to say that? I've seen some emails.
I wasn't, so I guess I don't.
There was a vote to give the officers five percent.
Of the present. Overall, or is the?
So that, including the three percent across the board, the chief would still just get the three percent, and the officers. Um. Two percent more, bringing them to five percent to try to bring them a little. It's not even gonna bring them closer to being in line with their. With what they're capable of, of accomplishing. Our goal was, we know that they have actively been being recruited. And we're just. This close to the whole department folding if we don't start to invest and let them know that.
Uh, yeah, to bring them up to a competitive wage, the number of eighteen point eight percent increase is what would have been required, so.
Mm-hmm.
We couldn't do that. And actually, and I'm thinking too, with, um. With Diane and your budget, what was the numbers factored into her police wage? Was that his three percent, or was there no?
That was.
That was the three percent.
Okay.
Cuz I did the end of the year, what I figured it's gonna be, and then.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
Since that meeting, I don't know if people knew this or didn't, but since that meeting, um, it's kinda come out that. Raises are like across the board, the same for everybody. I didn't know that. I don't know if you guys knew that, but it's typically, everybody's at three percent. So just kind of an FYI, a piece of information, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that they were typically the same across the board.
That's kind of how it's been, but in the last several years, we have made adjustments in different places as it was called for, but. And, and what's difficult is. Um. It's unavoidable that, uh, you know, this. It's, we cannot necessarily be committed to. You know, historically, I think that it was like, oh, you know, they're supposed to be comparable to the streets department. Or something like that, but the reality. Um. Thankfully, we have great employees in our streets department, and we haven't had any problems recruiting. But for us to recruit from, for the police department, being a different circumstance. And a different circumstance in the entire, um, law enforcement labor field. We can't be committed to holding our officers to that so that they're. More in line with other departments in the village because we won't have any officers. I mean, it would be like, you know, why are the janitors and mechanics? Or whatever at the school, or, you know, why isn't everybody making the same thing? We just. That's just, we can't do that and be able to sustain our police department particularly, and there may come a point where. You know, the labor market shifts, where it might be another department that. You know, the trends change, and then we'll have to address that at that time.
Right? Sorry.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, basically, the, what I'm hearing, the, the motion did come out of public safety, and the question is if, if we had three percent. Plugged into the budget, and I heard eight point some percent, is that right, uh, Caleb?
No, 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 we started. With eighteen point eight percent to reflect what would be the most ideal, bringing them up to a competitive wage. We didn't go with that, but that was, we saw those numbers and we saw each percentage, uh, and we went with five.
Okay, so therefore, the question, I'm back on the table, I'm gonna cut to the chase for you folks, if you don't mind, is that, it, um, you're looking for five for two officers, or the three officers?
Uh, well, ultimately, it would, well.
Two.
Two.
Okay, so if it's two officers, Diane, what I'm trying to say is that if you're calculating three percent for. Officers, and then you want to, to be have put additional two percent for two officers, what is that dollar amount be put on a table if they're gonna go forward with that?
About twenty-five hundred, so.
Twenty-five hundred, did you hear that?
Two thousand five hundred.
Total.
Okay.
Increase in retirement too, and stuff like four hundred bucks retirement, and otherwise little, you know, in other line.
So you're talking about two thousand nine hundred then, Diane?
Probably might have stayed three, you know.
For discussion tonight, then basically, I'm trying to get on a table, we have thirty thou, thirty-five thousand for, I don't remember the number, thirty-five thousand for a community. Community, uh, resource officer, and then three thousand for adjustment in the wage. So you're looking at those, I think you should look at individually, if you're gonna try to do anything. And then the problem is if you wanna do one or the other, you then need to take a look at them, Diane's full ahead, you need to take a look at that budget. And you gotta see what you're gonna cut. In what areas to achieve that request. I'm sorry if I'm a little bold, but that's how it's done.
No, that's, I mean, we need to redirect and.
Can I ask a question? Maybe it's when you know, so in this budget, if we go with the CRO. Would we be right to put the revenue line to thirty-five thousand from the grant, even though it's not really been accepted yet?
I don't think the grant's gonna cover thirty-five thousand. I think the grant's covering, let's say, our percentage is thirty-five, the school's another certain pro, and the grant covers the difference, that's, I mean, that's. Excuse me, that's how I'm hearing it.
Would be like seventy?
Well, no, it's seventy was the leftover.
The village would cover thirty-five, and Legacy would cover thirty-five, if Legacy comes through with this, right? That's the caveat, but to me. Okay, and maybe this is the hand question, if Legacy doesn't come through, we know we can't fund it, right? So then, so then is there any room like? This doesn't get used, does it go back into general fund if we know it's not gonna get used?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if we. Put it into our budget before it's even accepted. That's my question.
I think you only, like, Diane, I think you only can put the expenditure side on, and that'll be that piece. And if it doesn't occur, that, by, that line does not get spent, and you can do a budget amendment and put it as into reserves, so you don't lose it, so it doesn't go. To any other department. It, it's specifically designed for this project, and the project's contingent upon, when we're hearing it, it continues upon a legacy grant. From both parties. School and village.
That go in as a revenue or no?
No.
No.
Just, just the expenditure.
Okay. But only.
Our share, our share would be expenditure only thirty-five.
Okay.
So, Dwayne, I don't know if you had a chance to look at our minutes from the public safety. So we did that additional two percent. For the officers, for the two officers, and then there was concern about the clothing budget line. Especially when we're hoping to get that CRO officer. And also the police conference, and making sure that we have that training in there.
All I can tell you is, uh, when we looked at the CR, community resource officer, that was the full cost, no matter, it was the full cost, so therefore, it should be, nothing there for equipment or whatever happens, that should be. Part of that full grant, and if we, and then we have, we'll just. Have to split it all accordingly, but that's how you leave it as expenditure one spot, Diane, and if we have to split it all for a certain percentage goes to close, we can do that. Still all, it's still all based on both parties' agreement, and then remember, if we draft, it's contingent upon this grant, and we have drafted, say, if you don't get the grant, we don't have the project.
And if, sorry. Um, and if I could add to, um, Chief Drew had asked, is it possible to include in there any additional? Equipment expenses that they could consider, and they said they would consider it, so. Uh, there'd be the matching portion, but there. There's the possibility of s- some of the additional odds and ends that they could cover as well, but, you know.
That, and that's fine, that'd be a plus on the grant for the wages, but basically, you're, you're not gonna count that as a revenue side, you're just gonna. It's gonna come to somebody, if he gets, they get the grant, they pay for it directly, or we'll cut, they'll give us a check, and we just bring it in and pull it out, so I understand what you're doing.
So what are you saying, Dwayne? We do or, we do add it to the budget, or we do not?
Right now, all you can do is add as an expenditure. Because you don't know if the grant's coming or not, Diane, and if it does come, we gotta do a budget amendment, and we did, and that's how you gotta do it at this point.
Okay, but if we do that, then we have to cut thirty-five in expenditures, or otherwise, we're gonna be, uh, we're not gonna bow.
Yeah, that's true, that's what I said, we're gonna have to, if you wanna go forward, you gotta look for thirty-five, put it into the, the expenditure in the. In the police department's new line, or however you wanna put it. And that's the first item on the table, and, and I think Tiara was talking about some other things as training and more dollars. I don't know, I don't know if, um, is what I'm saying, but equipment replacement, I'd say you keep where it is. What are you, but I, I thought there was only one motion that came out of public safety. I did not know if any other ones came.
It is one motion, so the motion was. The two thousand twenty-four budget with the following amendments, including. Three percent salary increase for chief. And five percent for the officers, and then an additional one thousand to clothing expenses, bringing that total back to two thousand. And add a thousand to the p- police conference, bringing that total to two thousand.
So there was two thousand dollars additional.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, uh, the motions come out of public safety, as Diane said, three thousand, now you're asking for another thousand, so it's actually five thousand sitting on the table. From that, from out of the public safety community, if I read it right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I was not aware of that, and I don't know if Diane was either, so now if you're gonna do.
It's in our minutes.
I, I didn't see him, I apologize.
No problem.
And basically, on the table for tonight, thirty-five for the, uh, the research, community resource officer, and five for the police de. Police Department for the wages and these two other lines that you wanna increase.
May I interject? Go ahead.
Dwayne, you mentioned that the clothing was already built into the budget that you guys discussed for a fourth officer, so if that's the case, to me, that extra thousand doesn't need to go in the clothing budget line. I mean, I think we need to look for grants and whatnot, you know, but.
But if it was already.
Do you know what I mean? Like, if we're pinching pennies, and I, I don't know if it's gonna be possible or not, but if we're pinching pennies for that thirty-five, I think we gotta forego some of the other stuff and say, we, we gotta look at grants and. Move forward in that way.
And when I look over, Chief is over there nodding his head affirming.
Madam President?
Oh, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to make one comment on the legacy. Um, they did, uh, state that they weren't looking for a pot of money right now from us, they were looking for a commitment. And ideally, that would be a fifty percent match with, with them, so the school's gonna do half of the total bill, and they, they'd like some buy-in from the, the village. They understand our current predicament, but, so I, I don't even know if that thirty-five is exactly what we need today, but they need to know that we would be in it for the long haul and be able to. Fund this after the five years. So, I mean, ideally, that'd be great if we could find thirty-five thousand to fund this, but I think. Really, the main thing we need to do is, is agree that it's a good thing, and that we're gonna commit. X amount this year, X amount next year, and so on, to prove to them that this isn't a program that they would fund for a year or two, and we would follow. A cliff. So I really don't know if we need thirty-five right now, or if we can, we can agree as a, uh, community that we're behind this and will support it if. If they support it, um, I, I don't know if that's kinda how you, uh, read it, Mr. Vice President, but. But that, I know, uh, at one point, they did say, we don't need a, a pot of money right now, but we do need a commitment to, to go forward, so. Uh, and I am in, in agreement, if, if that, um, money was already baked into that, I'm, I wasn't sure exactly how that number amount came up. I'm totally fine with that, and I do intend, when I do write the grant, to ask for those things as well. Um, they said that they would be open to that, so. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I understand, and Chief, if I understand right, i- if you're gonna try to apply for a grant, you get out of half, get that grant, you need a MOU. Agreement between the village and the school district, signed, and works very well with the grant, and if you're gonna put a MOU together, you gotta at least fund that first year, otherwise, it doesn't mean anything. So I still think you got thirty-five thousand sitting on the table for this year.
Okay. And, uh. Hold on, one question. Eric, did you, I'm sorry, you started and he's, I gave you both.
Well, if you have fifty percent of the grant that we have to, the village has to cover, if you add those other things in there, the duty year and all that other stuff. That would raise our portion up to that half.
See, and, and I didn't read it that way. My understanding was, is they wanted a commitment from the village to, to prove that this would be funded for the future, and that was the example. And that was the example given if the school district was gonna pay half.
Fifty grand. We'd be on the hook for twenty five, that's a fifty fifty.
It, but, is that how you read it? Is it was a fifty fifty? I, I didn't read it that way.
At least there was, at least the example that was consistently thrown out is. What they would do, and perhaps, and what they've done in the past with similar situations.
But, but Dwayne's saying that duty gear was already figured in the first number, so, you know, if that's the case, we don't have to ask for the extra.
Correct, but, but I mean. This would be the opportunity to jumpstart a program, and I think that's where they, they buy in. Um, you know, I would ask for a vehicle. I would ask for, you know, an office computer, I would ask for those things that clearly we don't have the money for. If we do have to pay half of that, again, I didn't get that vibe, I got the vibe that we want the commitment from the village that we are gonna support this program. Because it had been learned before. They need to do some funding for Rapids uh, position, but the next chief then did not wanna support and. Basically, they had two or three years into a program that basically just fell by the wayside and that money was, was gone.
So from my, just picking up on the conversations here, are they asking for? Half of the wages and then they're okay adding in the extra stuff?
Well, see, that, that wasn't the, the actual. That wasn't really the, the basis of the, the content of the meeting and that we can get further to. It was more so that they bought into what we were selling them, but they, they are very impressed that the school district. Says, yes, we're in, we wanna support this, and. Why should they buy in if the village doesn't buy in? You know, they don't wanna support a program that you folks don't support. And, and of course, that is backed by money, but at the same point, they also know our financial situation with. The lakes and how that could impact, impact us in the future and our zero net, net uh, growth and, and that. So, I mean, we're looking for the future and they under, kinda understand that we're broke now. So, anything else?
I don't think so. Um, I guess I would prefer that we get, we try to find that thirty five thousand dollars, cause like Dwayne said, you kinda have to. Put in the money with your mouth, Eric.
So what happens if we do? Find the money, move forward, and then legacy doesn't buy us a car, legacy doesn't buy us all these other things, we gotta come up with that. The, the money, whatever that number is. You know, you want them to start Jan- January one or as soon as possible, you gotta have the stuff to outfit that position correctly. We're, we're relying on a, a foundation to fund our budget. That's what I'm thinking.
To you, so, so that's the purpose of me keeping this third squad that has been the topic of conversation. That's the purpose of me buying a computer I already have. So I have been prepping for this. By nickeling and diming it when I could get it. Um, we're gonna be looking at a vest, we're gonna be looking at uniforms. We do have some purchases, but the truth is, is that person could start tomorrow and we're ready.
Madam President.
Go ahead.
Uh, to respond to Eric, definitely, he has a great point with that, but I'm trying to tell you is if you're gonna commit to the project, you do an MOU memorandum, understanding between the parties. And it will be, both parties are gonna realize, I drafted, now they can talk to the superintendent, it'll be subject to the grant. If you don't get the grant, you don't move forward with the, with the project, so. It may not start in January or may not start in whenever that grant would come through. So I think the school and the village. Have that agreement, that means they're buying in, that means we're for the project. However, we say subject to the grant, I feel it's time the grant writers showing that we need them to make this prerogative program occur, so that memorandum agreement. When Chief puts his application, it's gonna be a very, very important document for them to read. You see how I'm doing it, Chief?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So are you suggesting, I'm sorry, are you suggesting, Dwayne, that we come out of this? Meeting with a motion to. Create a memorandum?
Most definitely, but you, you, if you're gonna have to commit or make that commitment, you then have to have a memorandum agreement to draft. And third, I hate to say it, but you're gonna have your mouth, money where your mouth is, and you're gonna have some dollars set aside. And if it doesn't go through, those dollars don't be spent on anything else, they say in the general fund of the village.
Essentially, we have to find thirty five thousand dollars.
Yes, and that's, that's the hard part, if you're gonna go forward with that, I mean, it's. It, we first gotta know what you wanna do is, which is a board. And then we gotta sit down and crunch some numbers from someplace, and I have some suggestions, but I wanna make sure that you really wanna go forward with it.
I wanna go forward with the discussion, but I think it depends on where the cuts come, right? And I think, like, I'm a huge proponent of doing this, but it depends on what gets cut. And I don't want anyone to, you know.
So what was the difference between the village administrator the full time and what we're doing for Dwayne, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, about fifteen approximately, yeah.
So you're putting your, putting your line number, you got fifteen, fifteen K from that line, if you, that's fifteen.
Right.
I'll be honest with you, I had a discussion with the fire chief, my last that left, or do you turn out gear? The turnout gear, they're going for a grant, if they're gonna go for a grant and get a full grant. You won't know that until the end of the year. I, I think when it passed, they used to get a grant, I don't think there was any match to it. That's my understanding. So I would cut ten grand from the turnout gear in a fire department. To find there, to find a certain piece. Now, I know that they may not like that, but at the same time, it's all in public safety, public safety is what you're working on. And the fire department, according to our chief, definitely informed me that night, I was with Betsy. That they're gonna apply for a grant for turnout gear, is that what you heard, Betsy?
Yes.
So there, I would put that ten grand on a table as another revenue. I know the chief's not there, but that's how I see it as administrator for you, if you really want that program.
Okay, Eric, I have a question for fire department, so what is the difference between? So you have L O S A. Which we know that's like the retirement thing, and the fire department dues, which ones, like, what's the difference on that one? I guess I'm just trying to understand that, is that like a two percent dues that you have to pay?
Yes, yes. I don't think there's anything else in the fire department budget you can look at, they are.
Sure what the difference was, oh, okay. I just wasn't sure, I just wanna make sure we weren't double paying it. I didn't think we were, but I just wanna make sure. Okay.
Third recommendation, sorry, question, somebody else want a question to me?
Nope, go ahead.
The third recommendation is that I think, if I understand, you put twenty K aside also for a new squad each year. Where you put it in place. And I'm saying that that's another twenty K you can put on a table. And the reason is.
Diane already took that out.
She already did that, Diane?
Yep, to make the budget work, yeah.
Thank you, I did not know that, I missed that, Diane, I apologize.
Yeah, and, and public safety agreed with, we didn't ask for that back, that was. We agree with that change.
So basically, you got yourself, uh, how much sitting on a table, and ten and what?
Fifteen, so we're at twenty five.
You gotta find another ten thousand.
Yeah. So, and just, I know we said the turnout gear. And Dwayne, when we had that meeting with Jason, did he not say like he couldn't find the, if it, if it's recommended every ten years or it had to be every ten years, you know, Eric?
It's recommended, Eric, you help me out.
But.
It's, that's kind of the golden rule, everything ten year, telling whatever, the, the tight rope that you're gonna walk down. Is because it's already expired, and this is now the second year that we're kicking the can down the. The road, that uh, if something happens, God forbid. There could be a liability on the village, because that's been the first thing that the attorneys look at.
So.
And I also, in discussion, I talked to the chief. He did say the turnout gear is not in that bad a shape, but there's a couple that use it more than other ones, if you wanna leave some money inside to get those out, but there's what, within, he, he said it was a three thousand dollars a pop.
Right, right. Ten thousand was coming from just to replace a couple sets.
So, I am, right, okay.
I'm nervous about that. I mean, and so I started looking at the grant list from the fire department and I'm like halfway. Through it, and there's one on here that it says, it, it, it's no emergency response equipment or conferences, it's the fifty thousand dollar one, so I don't know why that's what the grant finder or whatever that found it. But, I mean, there's a ton of them, but I think if we're gonna do that, we've gotta commit to helping the fire department fight these threats and. Trying for everyone we can.
I feel the same, if I go to cut that, then I should be in some ways responsible to helping them.
Some are easy, they're really, some are.
So Eric, sorry, I have another question. Turnout gear, do you, do you have some sets that were barely used? So like they're in decent condition, but they still technically expire though, even though they haven't been used, correct?
If you put your helmet, you can, you can sit on a rack, just like a PC, you can sit on a rack. There's a born on date.
A what?
A born on date.
So, are the, all, all of them? If you give them at different times, should all of them be expired or?
We bought all of that with a grant ten years ago, that's where.
Okay, so they're all the same.
Kinda holds ourselves.
Was that the D N R grant?
No. That was a big FEMA grant. D N R grant is only. Ten thousand, five thousand dollars for chainsaws and like uh, wildfires.
Well, it's, and it's a fifty percent match, the, so we had to, yeah, yeah. Which I, I mean, it's fine, but just so you guys know, that's not a. You're gonna match that one.
Are, the FEMA grants aren't on here, are they?
Um, no, there isn't a FEMA grant on here.
Cause honestly, I think probably those FEMA grants, would you think that those are gonna be more attainable, haven't they been historically?
Four, three, um.
So we're gonna know.
A lot of the money, just with anything with fire service, maybe Chief can attest to it, to, a lot of the money was a Dane Colney, Milwaukee. Uh, across, you know, bigger municipalities, right? Eric.
Eric's correct.
Dwayne, do you have any other suggestions? I know you said ten thousand for the turnout gear, and I know. There's hesitancy here, but is there anywhere else that you noticed?
I know that, when Diane and I are looking at, we're picking bones, and there was a few things here, a few things there, but I don't think it's another ten thousand, was it Diane?
No.
I got a couple ideas.
Okay.
That's just, it scares off. How many, how many building inspections do we do a year? Temple.
School, no, the fire department?
No, building inspections, when they come in.
Oh.
New construction.
I just got a new fire too, I'm sorry.
We pay him two thousand, yeah, we'd have to get the numbers from that, man.
So, we pay the inspector twenty four thousand dollars a year. Um. Well, before we had the inspector, we just paid for like an ala carte, right?
That was, it was a city, I don't know why that quit.
Yeah, but that's something that we could look at, which would maybe, so there's twenty four thousand dollars if we cut. Or manipulate.
Yeah, we could still have some for building.
Yeah, yeah, but not twenty four, we don't have to pay for a guy to sit a month with zero building inspections, then we pay him two thousand dollars.
Cut that in half, you know, you can't figure on the whole twenty four, it's still some money.
But he played hardball on the contract, he's like, it's two grand, we gotta give you this, or I, I walk, there's other companies out there, you know, we could look at that. Or if we could find a service that is ala carte.
So are we looking maybe a possible twen- uh, twelve thousand?
It depends on whatever.
Depends, right, but I mean, it's at least worth having a conversation with Rapids, why did we separate, I mean? Or at least with contract, yeah.
Um. Another one to bring it back is the first responders. Um, paying that, if, if, if you still wanna fund that, you could change the rate on that, because as of right now. Let's say a first responder gets called out at noon, and they're, they're gone for five minutes, thirty four dollars, they get raised out again at twelve oh seven, thirty five dollars, thirty four dollars. You could change that rate to ten dollars an hour or, or whatever, or you scrap the whole thing, cause there's four people doing it. Because we have Rapids ambulance that we just now paid an extra twenty five grand for.
And I just, I'll comment on that because we do have a contract, so. For fire responders with Cranmore. Talk to Jason about that, like it was like, we're. Where are we on that? And it's just because we have other contracts, so we can't completely scrap it, but I would much rather be like, well. Well, right, because sometimes it is, they don't even leave the driveway.
Yeah, there was a thought about changing the rate, so ultimately they get more, but it, it ends up saving us too.
Yeah, I had suggested along the lines of it, rather than doing the. Thirty four for two hours, that we instead said twenty dollars an hour. They're not gonna be, so really, in, in all reality, they're getting paid more. But they're getting paid hourly, and if they work two hours, they're getting forty dollars rather than thirty six.
Madam President?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna interrupt. Trustee, dear, so continue.
Go ahead.
What if I know, right, the, the fire department knows the calls that are uh, first responder calls, they know if they're in, was uh, in the, in the. And they can mark them down and they come in, the calls come through nine one one, Eric, and we know if they are in uh, Port Edwards. And if they're not in Port Edwards, they'll know the address. So, basically, we could eliminate going on calls for Port Edwards. And I don't know, and then, and um, uh, Jason had to tell us the number, what that is. And we need, need to keep a number in there for calls, where, where we have contracts. And I don't, I don't know, I know why I, the numbers, if I know Diane right, we're only talking about thirteen thousand on first responders total year, right Diane?
Whole thing, yep, twelve or thirteen, yep.
So twelve and thirteen is the total amount that we've seen in the past for first responders and wages. And if we are committed to, and Eric, if we're committed to contract provided to two townships. We have to look at the history of those responses to those two townships and say. We're, we're doing, let's say we're doing thirty or fifty calls, first responders totally, and of those fifty, thirty are ports, and we can say that, so we can cut. You see where I'm trying to go, so we, and the other thing, go ahead, Eric.
I agree, there's meat on the bone there, it could just be finagle to find some thousands of dollars.
I mean, I agree with you, Eric, but I was trying to say, we don't take the whole thing, you know, and, and I think Jason can give us a number for it quickly, if we even call them, cause he know. You guys, he, he keeps a very good record, I know the records come in and they, they are known which goes to port and which goes to the townships.
Well, the thing with trying to find money and try to cut it, if it is a five-year original program, you have to find funding. You know, that's gonna be sustainable.
Cause next year, we're not gonna get. That's, that's true, and basically, we are not getting any of the tax base for the uh, the um. Knuckle, until next year, we're not getting it this year, so there, there's a revenue that we, we have it, we know there's gonna be additional revenues based on a tax difference between the two. So I'm just trying to get a commitment for this year, and then you're gonna have to do the same knuckle crunching in twenty twenty five.
What I'm getting at is like the landlord, you know, yes, we could kick that down another year and save a hundred and some thousand dollars, but next year you're gonna have to come up with that hundred thousand dollars. You know, by the building inspector, first responders, the other thing to look at is raises. You know, there's, how much is in raises, twenty five thousand? Fifteen grand, something like that, total raises for across the board.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't think we can set the police department up to have all that resentment, like, this is what you guys did to us. I think that'd be a disaster.
And I think, there are a couple other options. Okay, you could take a loan out for the landlord, I don't know if you guys, how you are about loans. Say it's a hundred and fifty, you put a hundred and fifty in the revenues, cause you're getting that from the bank, a hundred and fifty in your. Expenses, cause you're paying that out, and then your loan payments each year can be added to the tax level. So then you take the one ten out, that's going for a hundred account, maybe not take it out completely, but could lower it.
I know, I feel like we're running, you know, they fall.
That's it, so that's, you can do that, or you do a referendum with a couple of the side if they want the CRO. And then we get the tax money, additional tax money from their taxes. That'd be up to them.
Because the school is going with the referendum, I don't think it's a good time for us to go that way. Eric, do you have any other views?
Oh, I have some other, but I'll just.
Let's keep it. You wanna write them on here, Brian, I'll read them.
Can you say the first idea again?
You take our loan, wait for the landlord, save the hundred and fifty thousand, so the revenues. Hundred and fifty goes, cause that's what you get from the bank, and then in the expenses, you have a hundred and fifty paying for it.
Yeah.
But then your, then your loan payments will also go up. But then we can increase our levy by those loan payments.
Yes.
So then you will be taking, you could take that one ten out of.
Right.
You know, out of the four hundred account going into there, I mean, I wouldn't take the whole thing out, but, but just. Well, that's a big chunk done, but you could take some of it. And that would be the extra money there.
If we did that and only took out the amount we needed and then, you know, paid, paid down the bulk. And had a small loan, I think that might be a good idea. What, what do you think of that, Dwayne?
Well, I actually, I'm going back to Diane's proposal, be reason being is that this is kind of really, you don't realize this, but by taking a loan out, that also helps you on, that helps you on. This is kind of really, you don't realize this, but by taking a loan out, that also helps you, and that helps you on your, uh, growth. Like if you had new growth, that helps on the other side, if they can raise your, your levy limits in the future. I mean, they get, they give you more funds to work with. By doing what she's recommending is, and it depends on how much debt you got out there, I think you could do this, because. What you do is, like she said, you, you, you still, um, you remove the amount of dollars that you need for your programs you want, let's say the. See, uh, give me resource officer, little bumps in the wages, et cetera, et cetera. Then you, then you, then you keep the difference in your capital fund, and you go and borrow for, for the landlord. What she's telling you then is that then you have to eat, next year and the year after, you're gonna have an amortization schedule that you gotta put in your budget each year. And that's not the full amount. And that, I have to agree with her, I think that's your solution. Long run, what happens then is that. You feel comfortable having a commitment for a five-year program for the community, right, resource officer. And you're all, I think the memorandum agreement still stays as it is, but that is when we are getting your, meeting your budget requirements. Her and I did talk about that, and that was one of the options that she had mentioned to us too.
But the one thing you do have to remember, if the loan's paid off, you have to subtract that from your lobby.
You're right.
Why they don't present another loan, so.
You know, I mean, that, the one thing you do have to remember, yeah.
So what's the downside, other, you know, what's the downside?
Downside is, is it depends how much debt you have out there. And how much you gotta pay back each year, and then if you got, if you look at your debt program. You gotta take a look, you may have some debt that's gonna be closing in a couple years, in other words, you might have something come, I don't know, but you got, not, not in the utility, but say in your general fund. You must have some other debt out there right now that you're making payment on. And you must have, I don't think you have one or two, how many, how many you got out there Diane?
Yeah, there's three other loans. And it comes to one thirty-nine thousand, one oh three, is what we have right now, that's the last thing on the expenses.
Like Tiara said, if we only, if we only got a loan for the piece that we, so like, help me out with this. Let's say we've got the fifteen K from the village administrator salary, let's say we don't touch the fire department's ten grand for the turnout gear, right? And so we've gotta come up with another twenty grand for the thirty-five K, so if we're just looking for twenty grand, can we?
Offer a loan for that?
No, not for, but, cause you're saying to ta- don't take out the full amount for, what's the landlord, one ten?
No, I'm saying, which, it's a hundred and fifty, probably somewhere around there. I'm saying you take it out for the whole thing. But then, where it can help is then that one ten that we had going into the four hundred street machinery. Okay, in order to pay for this landlord, cause it's more than one ten, but we already have some, uh, some money in there. You could lower that amount then going into that four hundred account.
So do we lower by twenty K?
Well, you have a hundred and ten, and we only need what, thirty-five or forty, say, here, so you're looking at. Seventy dollars, let's see, the seventy dollars that you can put elsewhere, and we could maybe put it in some four hundred account that we took it out of.
Dwayne, when you said. By doing this, we could more secure the commitment for the five-year plan, are you suggesting that we have a four hundred account? In some capacity, what do, what did you mean by that?
Not for the, no, what I meant by that is that, well, you, you're getting real dollars in your budget for the commitment. But it's like, like Diane said, you have on a table, if I'm right, you roughly have thirty-five plus five, so you're looking at forty thousand dollars, which you wanna. Fund, we talked about earlier. She's saying, use forty thousand out of that, um, uh, I gotta get, what fund is that called, the foreigner fund? Leave the remainder in there. And then you still go get the loan for the full amount, because you need to make payments on it, and, and then you can do a down payment, I think. But Diane's explaining it is the best process for your overall budget, to do what you're trying to do as a group. And then you do that commitment, then you're back at it again, looking at your twenty-five years, see where your revenues are and how your growth's coming. There should be some little growth going, because they're still building homes out there, but it won't be much. Like Dan saw last year, there's a little growth. That'll get you through the year, if Diane agrees with, Diane, you, I think you agree with me on that, don't you?
Yeah. Okay. Can we leave the fire department piece alone then?
Yes.
Oh, Eric, do you have anything else? And I used to be ideas.
Does anyone think that that's a terrible idea? Seems like it's solving more than one problem.
Right, I don't love solving problems with taking out loans, I don't think that's generally a long-term solution. But if, sometimes there are small loans, right, like. Wait, I think we, if it's, if it's helping us in more than one thing, we just have to be intentional. Throughout the next couple of years to make sure that we are setting aside money for this, that we can. Benefit that I'm seeing right now is this is a five-year contract and all that, well. By then. Officer Drew is going to be gone, and then we might have to hire, or maybe we won't hire somebody. Maybe we won't find somebody to hire, so I think, but we still have that commitment to the school that I think is needed. To where that's not in that next police chief's hands, that's. That's already a done deal. But everybody's consensus on that, on the loan, uh, idea.
I think it's the swiftest, easiest, most direct option.
Well, my biggest thing is, we don't know, we don't know this time next year. By taking a loan out, that solves today's problem, right, you know, but. Maybe. The wastewater treatment plant blows up, I don't know. There's insurance, there's other stuff, but I mean, there's, if some, what's the next big thing to come, you know, is it gonna be? I don't know. I don't like. Me personally, I don't like fixing long-term problems with short-term solutions. You know, ultimately, we're, we're trying to spend more money than, than we have coming in, and by putting it on a, on a loan, just. Extended. But not saying it's right, I mean, Diane's fine with it.
But it also is.
The board's decision, what you wanna do, I'm just gonna suggest, you know, what can be done.
Right.
And, and I think.
But you're not, not giving us.
Maybe what Chief Drew was also saying is that they were willing to go above and beyond fifty percent. I mean, if they were here at the table listening to how we're trying to finagle all these numbers, if they were here to listen to this, and talking about loans and cutting. Turnout gear and things like that. Um, maybe we'd be, if not this year, but renegotiate that next year. Or for the future. Because I don't think it would interest them to do something that ultimately hurts, hurts us in the long run. So, is that, did they kinda indicate?
Yeah, and, and that's kind of the impression I got, is that it could be. I guess more so, especially to start. Um, to get us off, off the ground and running, but. And again, I don't have a, a horse in the race here, but, I mean, if, if there was money left in that four hundred account, that's kind of that safety net. That we could don't pay that loan. Um, or, or have that on hand, I guess that would be a little bit of a, a cash. Safety net on hand as well, but.
Madam President.
Go ahead.
I have a question, where are we getting this five years from a commitment, is that coming from the grant program, or is that coming from the school district board? And the third question I have, it's kinda ironic, that we went to their meeting, but we have no one here to our meeting, like Kit was saying, so. They're asking, we went to their meeting, I think our collective officials did to listen to their proposal, and here we are sitting trying to. Well, never mind, basically, the, does the five-year come from the grant portion?
Yeah, the five years from the grant piece.
That's the kind of skin in the game that they were looking for, that from legacy.
Well, and I don't, if I understand it right, it wasn't that. We went to their meeting as much as we approached them and asked for a meeting.
Oh, apologize.
Right, and without objection, do you, can we go to Donna, she looks like she needs to clarify something.
Do you wanna clarify it, because they're a big program, right? And we didn't know if we should even waste our time, or if we would even be considered. So we begged borrowed, without, we begged them to meet with us, to say, here's something we're interested in. Would you even consider, would you look at this at all to help us out? And we came with examples and stuff, and we asked to sit around the table with them, and, um, they don't very often do this. He did not say, if I recall, right, I just looked at my notes, he didn't say five years. He said, this is what I will share with you, this is what's been in the past. Everybody's gotta have skin in the game, that's exactly the terms he used. If we sit around the table and only certain people are willing to do it, we, we have, they have thousands and thousands of grants. And he said, they've been burned, he said, if you guys wanna put this together, and you want us to look at it, we wouldn't even review it. This is what I give you for, um, examples to put in there, and then he said, so what are you looking about for? So these were just numbers or examples. And he said.
I think it would probably help them.
Yes, he said maybe over two years, three years, five years, he said, we don't want this to drop in a year. We have, we're looking at big picture things, we get, help people get started for the well, you know, the wellness of the community, and then we move on. So everybody's thriving, right? So he wasn't really, I mean, he didn't come across and say five years. He just, he was just helping us, like. Am I correct, he didn't say five years, he didn't say thirty-five thousand, he didn't, he said, so you're looking for a, well, what do you need to start this? Who's committing what, and we always said was the school board already approved this amount. And he's, he had a really good idea, he said, well, the reason you're going for this amount is, cause you're never gonna find an SRO officer to do this part-time, right? This isn't a gig that anybody's gonna take. So I mean, these are the things that he was prompting, and he just, he made us, it was excellent. You know, and so I really wanna thank them, because they gave up their time and met with us, and we didn't even know if we should pursue it. So.
We're gonna ask a punch of clarification to Dwayne.
Yes.
Go ahead. Dwayne, were you suggesting that a school board member should be at our meeting tonight?
No, I didn't, I did not realize what meeting you're at, so I apologize, I thought you were at a school board meeting. So I just, I, I missed, my misspoke and was not correct, I take my comment off the record.
Hey, they met with Legacy today, so.
So, thank you.
I'm glad you did that, take my comment off the record, it's inappropriate.
Donna Schroda is here representing the school.
And I apologize.
Okay. So again, consensus, is that the thing that we wanna do, and then that, is that what we wanna pursue? And go forward with. Then obviously, if it all. Kind of falls, I mean.
Which we could just pay back.
The only thing that makes me nervous, and I, I see us just cutting and cutting. Here and there, it's just, we, we talked about this last time, is that emergency fund, like what Eric said, like something big goes down. We're gonna have some problems. It's just my.
How much are we budgeting in there?
No.
I mean, that's where that, kind of that cash. Uh, sign funds kinda comes into play, where we should really be at four hundred, rolling a hundred in our budget.
So I'm.
Glad that you guys, I may be able to bring that up, if we do it, if you guys wanna do it, with the way.
Okay, so, just so that we can move off of this topic and, or try to look at the rest of the budget. Consensus on, this is where we wanna go.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that Eric had a good question, and so then, but, but basically, if you get to that situation, where you're in an emergency, you gotta go beyond a hundred thousand. Then you look at your loan, I don't think you do it ahead of time, Diane, just wait, wait if you get in that situation, and I don't think you may. That's how you would have to, that's how the community do it, if you're in that type. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting that we use our reserve funds? And only take the loan if we need it?
No, no, you don't use your reserve funds, I'm saying that you, like Diane proposed. And Eric is right, you're very thin, but if you get into an emergency where you go beyond your reserves, your hundred thousand, that's when you look at, looking at a loan for that emergency. You may not have one, you may not see one, you only in case you have one, I would not go and borrow more money to set it in there. It, it's just, it's just you're paying interest on something you don't need to at the time, unless something comes up, that's when you go after, you go out that loan.
Yeah, okay. Feel comfortable going that way?
Comfortable.
I mean, I don't. More comfortable than.
So is, what is being. Suggested right now is the loan, and we're not cutting anything else?
I mean, I think if we can find efficiencies, that way we do that too, but, um, and then we just have to get the MOU in place, Dwayne, that's kind of.
I'd rather not cut the turnout gear though, we don't have to, because. You know, we're always talking about safety, you know, when safety for firemen has been a big topic of conversation this year, right?
When I think, I know I had that conversation with Chief about like how, and then why is it all at once, then he explained like it was one big grant, and I think that's the.
And either way, I think we still need it, some of these grants are not hard to apply for, we need to.
Right.
And by, by we, I mean like, we, right, whatever help we can give, I think we need to be doing that.
Okay, anything else on that topic piece? So Dwayne, we just need a MOU, then the rest we can figure. Sorry, trying to stop my damn, um. With the, with the loan and all that, well, in the, like, correct?
Um, you, you, I think you're to point that Diane's trying to set the budget, so we can advertise it, et cetera. So you're going to have to make, consider two motions, one is that you're gonna agree with the. School and starting M M, M R, um, memorandum agreement, and you're setting aside thirty-five thousand for that. And you're also gonna agree, and that, that's, that's it, that's your, that's your first motion. And, and I'm gonna set, round the second one, would be is that you're gonna take. Forty thousand. Out of your equipment fund and, and budget, put those revenues and those expensive expenditures in the red lines. What you asked for, like the resource officer and the. Increase in wages, et cetera.
So I'll make the first motion to, um, create a memorandum of understanding. With the school district or Legacy?
With the four hundred room school.
With the school district. To create this position, and we will set aside thirty-five thousand in the budget. To start funding it.
Can I say a comment before they finish that motion? It's good, I would, but I would say subject to funding from those, the legacy grant in your motion, so therefore that's in a memorandum agreement.
Subject to, to the legacy grant.
I'll second that.
I don't think you can put a number on there, just because. We don't have a loan, we don't have a legacy, we don't have thirty-five grand, so.
And that would be the subject to the levi- legacy grant.
Right, so this thing is gonna get tossed out if. The legacy grant falls through, then we don't take out the loan, we don't do the thirty-five thousand dollars, it just.
I would just take the number off, cause you truly don't know if it is thirty-five thousand.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right?
I have a question, um, I think I have to put the full seventy-five thousand on the police department wages though.
And then you get reimbursed?
Yeah, and then if we get the grant, it comes into the revenues, but I apparently can't count on that right now. So, I mean, the only way this was gonna work, probably was by doing the loan, because I have to put that full amount. And, and we're gonna have a hundred and thirty thousand extra expenses in the budget. Um, I can't just put thirty-five in, but that's not realistic, then when the auditor is looked, they're gonna say, well, you were way over from what your budget said.
Okay. Real number is what?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, she's gonna have to amend that now, right, cause there's a.
I agree with, I agree with Eric, is that you make the motion that you're gonna do memorandum agreement, subject to legacy grant. Don't put amount of dollars in there, we then do a separate motion for a budget process, so you mean that clean, and that's, they know you're, that's your commitment. You don't have to show money.
Okay, so. I'll retract that motion. You second it?
Yeah.
Um. And instead, make a motion to cre- create the memorandum of understanding with school district. Um, to condition, conditional or subject to legacy grant?
Second that.
Any discussion, any more discussion? Okay, and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay.
I have one question.
Okay, I had two different numbers, was the school giving sixty thousand or sixty-five? What did they agree on? The original number I thought was sixty, cause it was sixty and seventy. Original number, Dwayne had a sixty thousand, nine thirty-seven fifty, but then someone said at the meeting, they were giving sixty-five, I don't know.
Yeah, she's. But he did say sixty-five today in the meeting. But I haven't seen it in writing.
Go off with the original unless he.
Okay, so for the rest of the budget, Dwayne, what else do we?
Well, no, now I have to work with Diane, and basically the number she's looking for is what she, what we put totaled in there for the, uh. Is it seventy-five or sixty-five? We gotta make sure the number we're, we're participating in is in a budget. And I, I remember memorandum, I think Jen corrected it probably in the last meeting very well, that we only need to do so much for this year. And I remember her giving me corrections, so I think it's whatever that number was, it's sixty-five something.
Not gonna find the email?
Yes, Jen.
But I mean, for the, like, the rest of, like, what do you wanna say publish for the rest of tonight, besides?
Yep, you have to make a motion, put that in, you're gonna get that in your expenditure side, and you also gotta. Show that the, um, what did you say, Diana, revenue side a certain amount too?
From the school, yeah.
Yes, from the school.
But I'm not putting the grant amount in.
No, no, she, what we're doing is, she's trying to full, we're full, we're the ones that are going to. Do all the hiring, doing all the work, so the schools, you gotta put the revenue side for the school to, to get the difference. Correct, correct Diane?
Right. Sixty-five, downstairs.
It's at sixty-five? Okay.
The board must have rounded that number up.
Okay. Go sixty-five, okay.
That's that, that's that item, and then if you wanna take, you gotta, you want that other five thousand, then you gotta put that on a different line, Diane, the, uh. So you get, then you gotta take sixty-five plus the five that comes out of your. Of the, well, all the money, the rest of the money goes for a loan, and the remainder just sits in there. Right, Diane?
No.
I'm not sure, it's saying like, for the, I have to increase the wages, but then I also have to increase. Was that clothing line in those, going up a thousand?
I think we took the clothing line, oh, because it was included in that original hundred and thirty thousand. So we're just looking for the wages to the three thousand.
But I mean, on the budget, there's only gonna be a thousand in clothing and a thousand in TV conferences. I thought that was, those were going up to two thousand.
Um, we didn't say anything about the conferences, but.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, no, I know, but we didn't, we didn't say anything at this meeting, if we were gonna keep that.
What?
So you want, you have the conferences at for two thousand?
Yes, that's what.
For the trainings?
Yeah, that's what our motion was.
And then the, um. Clothing is back to a thousand, because that's included in.
Well, but what Diane's saying, if I'm understanding it right, she needs to establish that on the budget, so we need to more or less leave the budget, leave our motion the way it was.
Yeah, you guys are saying that's part of the one thirty, but on the budget, I need to.
Right.
Go up to two thousand.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
Oh. I'm sorry, I was thinking the opposite. Moving on, okay, so. I confused myself. Okay, so we need to make a motion to add those other things in? Is that what we're saying, Dwayne?
Yes, Diana, Diana knows the numbers and what lines it gotta go to, you just gotta give her a number.
Okay, with the, um, benefit. The way the budget is right now, it's figuring for, in a, a full-time administrator. Or leave, are we leaving those in there and adding benefits for this officer? Or are we taking the administrative benefits out, which I'm afraid in the future, if you ever wanna bring one back in, it's gonna be hard.
Um, I don't think we touched the administrators anything, just in case, we don't, we really haven't. Explored enough, or had enough. Time to work with Dwayne on being plantable, on how do we really wanna move forward?
Okay, so the number they have in there now, I'm gonna add to them, but, um, yeah, okay. So just so you know, retirement, though, I'm gonna be adding ten thousand, seven hundred and forty, because that's what the retirement would be for a seventy-five thousand dollar. And your officer.
So the double with a general. The numbers that we came up with, doesn't it include the retirement estimation, Drew?
I'm just saying it, yeah, but the budget, where the budget stands now, I'm gonna have to raise those numbers, I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
But, cause the, like, the district was involved in helping pay for the benefits as well, but it still has to go in the budget.
But when we're talking about. So that full number, what did it start out as, a hundred and thirty for a new officer, part of that was benefits, part of it was wage, so we're splitting that off as.
And I do think that number is a little old. When you asked me for that number, Dwayne, I didn't know what you were using it for, and you said, how much, and I said about a hundred and thirty thousand, but I wish I didn't know and it was gonna be used. This specifically, and I would have really, really broken it down, but it'll be close, might be a little more, yeah.
So at this point, are, are you saying, Dwayne, that we need to bring the motion that we brought forward at public safety at? To give Diane the framework to adjust the budget lines? Is that what you're saying?
What I understand so far, we're only dealing with the community resource officer, correct Diane?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to.
All the other budget lines, you don't have to have a motion, because public works, we didn't have a motion. Only motion that you'll have is the approval at the budget.
When you approve the budget?
Yes, Eric, that's the way, should be done, is that you, you just know what you want her to adjust it on.
Moving it on December.
Wrong, but clothing doesn't have to go up per se, now, because it was.
Yeah, that would be, we're agreeing that.
It still has to go up on the budget line, because that's where the money gets pulled.
We lowered those to not include a fourth office, so now we have to go back up.
So we don't need a motion for that? You ju- you just need to know where to. Put it back.
The money's gonna be there from a different place, but we still have to have it on the budget line to be able to expend it.
Okay, kinda makes sense, that way that, that the total one thirty is somewhere, somewhere in different places. Here and there and over.
Are we gonna know if we get approved for a loan or approve a loan? For capital outlay for streets and or legacy by the time in December that we have to approve the budget?
Well, I think that's to expedite the legacy, but I'm not sure it's gonna be that quick, from what I understand, correct?
Well, and I think.
They meet in December, Legacy does.
But before our budget meeting, what, December fifth?
Yes, for the application in a couple of weeks, we could.
I, I think, sorry, Eric, I think you, you just go with the number she's adding, that's your pu- public hearing. Those numbers be in place, and that's your budget, and she has the revenues plugged in portion of it. And the, they're trying to find those portions, she's gonna, you're saying you're taking a whole loan out for the, uh. End loader, and that's, that's where you're finding your revenues to put back in different places.
I understand that, but you're gonna be in the red if. Those sources aren't.
No, we're not gonna count on the legacy loan, when we do this, hopefully to make it come out without that.
So you're gonna talk to Rob and get a loan in place for.
Well, we may probably do that.
Prior to the, so we know that we have the money available. Prior to the budget.
Dwayne's shaking his head, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, so, on any budget stuff?
Anything else, Dwayne?
No.
So we are good to. Proceed forward until.
Yes, proceed forward, and she's gotta put the numbers together for the public hearing. And then we, uh, that'll be the numbers you adopt the budget on, and basically, we have, I have a short period of time to get the, the information for the. Final budget in December.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you Diane, for the work on it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, but I, without objection, I'll adjourn any at six-twenty. Got anything else, Dwayne?
No ma'am.
All right, see you later.